Ubusutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
John, you are able to go ahead and unmute yourself?
About now. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Morning, John.
Good morning.
So do you want to give us an idea of where you are and why you're there?
I am at my house, 7652 F. Plants Road, Marysville. I'm here because I have a contagious illness. I do not wish to share with you guys for Christmas. My 20-year-old son, Thomas, is in the house but not in the same room.
Okay. Well, enjoy the meeting. So welcome to the Board of Supervisors Tuesday, December 10th. And Natalie?
Welcome to the Uba County Board of Supervisors meeting. As a courtesy to others, please turn off cell phones or other electronic devices which may disrupt the meeting. If attending via Zoom, please have your microphones muted at times when you are not speaking. All items on the agenda other than correspondence and board and staff member reports are considered items for which the board may take action. The public will be given opportunity to comment on action items on the agenda when the item is heard, and comments shall be limited to three minutes per individual or group.
Thank you. Supervisor Bradford is going to lead us in the pledge.
Sure, please stand and salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Here.
Supervisor Blazer.
Here.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford.
Here.
Supervisor Messick.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be action items that are routine and can be enacted in one motion.
So moved.
All second.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment? I don't see any. All in favor? Anybody opposed?
Oh, what was that?
Okay. Since John's remote, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Thank you.
We are now doing a couple of presentations. I see way too many people in the audience. Kevin, are you going to do this?
Yes, I'm going to do my best at doing this. So.
Can I come down and join you?
Yes, yes, Don, why don't you come down and join me? And we have a proclamation for you that I'm going to read. And then I think we have some others that want to present as well.
Yeah, I thought it was just going to be you.
Just me. Well, it is just me and the county family.
That's why we hired you.
All right.
I always, whenever I do these, I run out of breath about halfway through, and I start stuttering. So good luck.
Good luck. All right. Well, good morning, everyone. And we have, I have the honor this morning to read a proclamation to you that we're presenting, that the Board of Supervisors is presenting to Don Blazer. So whereas Don was born and raised in the Ubusutter region, graduating from Sutter Union High School, where he met his wife, Lavina.
Lavina is here.
Yes, who is here in the audience.
And my daughter.
Yes. So though he says they're childhood sweethearts, she states, "He picked me up selling records in Uba City." Well, he was attending college at UC Davis.
That's true.
Yes, where he acquired his degree in ag business. And whereas Don's roots grow deep in Sutter County, where he helped in the family farming business for many years, until he started his employment with Uba City Steel Products, putting his degree to good use and dedicating 30 years to the company. Whereas Don and Lavina married on November 2nd, 1968, recently celebrating their 56th wedding anniversary. They have two children, Adam and Krisha. Krisha is here today with us. And four grandchildren, Kason, Brayden, Marissa, and Nathan. Whereas in the early 2000s, Don and his family were totally impressed and inspired by a coffee shop in Hawaii known as Badass Coffee from Hawaii. So and soon thereafter, Don and his wife, oh, I'm sorry. So Don's son and wife later opened their own coffee shop in Roseville known as Badass Coffee. And then soon thereafter, Don and his wife acquired the Brick Coffee House Cafe in Marysville. Though it initially took a major cleanup and was meant to be only a local coffee shop, you know, it's managed to become a thriving place to visit for great food and desserts, especially known for the great catering service and those brownies.
Brownies.
Love the brick brownies. Yeah. It managed to stay in the family business for 20 years. Though it has new owners, the same menu continues to flourish to this day. And whereas Don was elected to Uba County Board of Supervisors in 2021, where he represented District 2, Don has represented Uba County on numerous boards, including Area on 18, Area 4, California State Association of Counties, North Central Counties Consortium, and several others, where he shared many experiences and special moments, one being elected Board Chairman this current year. We really appreciate you doing that this year. Whereas Don will be greatly missed, but he promises to continue to thrive in many new endeavors with the city of Marysville and Uba County. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Uba County Board of Supervisors hereby commends Don Blazer for his commitment to the citizens of Uba County and thanks him for his years of service. Thank you, Don.
Thank you. You didn't quite catch me off guard, but almost. Briefly, it's been a lot of fun. It's one thing to work with a lot of fellow employees, but it's even a better thing to be working with a lot of friends. And that's where I go. In a minute, we're going to get back to work. Is there something else?
No. Back up here.
Oh, this is. Want to get a picture? Yeah, they should come up.
We could, we could, we could. Yeah, yeah, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be behind you.
Okay.
All right.
Take the shortcut.
Well, it was very nice, much appreciated. Now I've completely lost track of the agenda. So we have another special presentation.
Through the chair, we do have one additional presentation.
Oh. Or who?
It spins around. Sorry.
Good morning. On behalf of Senator Nilo and Assemblyman Gallagher, it is an honor and a privilege to be here today to present a resolution from the California State Legislature recognizing Don Blazer, thanking him for his service to the Uba County Board of Supervisors, citizens and residents of Uba County. We really appreciate all that you have done and how the county has prospered.
And David Morgan with Congressman Doug LaMalfa's office, I have a special congressional record that we entered in the halls of Congress on behalf of Supervisor Don Blazer, recognizing your term of service, your years of rural advocacy promoting our businesses in the Ubusutter region, and the hard work that you had with your business, as well as your life with your wife and family. So we appreciate your tenure here. We appreciate everything you've done and continue to do and will do for our area. And thank you. We really appreciate it.
Well, I'm back. I'm running out of words. This is actually pretty unexpected. Laura, we should give you a special presentation because I've known Laura for 40 years. I don't know in various capacities. So anyway, it's much appreciated. I really like it. I enjoy the recognition, and I see a lot of smiling faces out there that are going to be friends in the future. So thank you.
So through the chair, before you sit back down, I just wanted, I mean, go ahead and sit back down before we move on to the next item is what I meant. I just wanted to say, echo what we've kind of already heard. I want to thank you for your service and say it's been a pleasure to serve with you on this board for the last four years. And I appreciate your contributions. And I think we've worked very well together to move the county forward, and I greatly appreciate that. So thank you. Well, it's been enjoyable to be with you guys, so.
Don, it's been a pleasure.
Andy, it's been a pleasure.
You've always, you always put the county first. I do appreciate that. And we need more, more politicians that do that, put the citizen first. Thank you.
Rather than a politician, I prefer to be community service or something like that.
Too bad. You have four years and you got the scars to prove it.
I think now we're moving on to the other presentation, number 641, Annual Presentation of the Uba County Community Health Improvement Plan. That would be Dr. Liu.
Excuse me, I'm a little short. So good morning, Chair and members of the board. Dr. Liu, your health officer here to present the annual presentation of the Uba County Community Health Improvement Plan. So our implementation of the Community Health Improvement Plan is actually part of the Uba County overall strategic plan listed for 2023, 2024 deliverables. So let's take a step back and say like, what is this? So for about 18 months, from 2022 to late 2023, we conducted a very rigorous community health assessment with both qualitative data, focus groups, key informant interviews, asking the Uba County community, what do they feel are the key health priorities for Uba County? And we collected all that data, presented a large in-person meeting, and asked the community to rank the top three health priorities. And they ranked them. And those are mental health access, healthcare access, and safe neighborhood and built environment. And then what we do with that is that for the next three to five years, from 2023 to 2028, we have a list of SMART goals, objectives, strategy, and tactics to move the needle and hopefully see progress, meaningful impact across those three health priorities. So here they are encapsulation again for your knowledge. And then how do we maintain the CHIP momentum? Because you all have probably been part of lots and lots of improvement plans or plans where they kind of get published, and then they get put into a file, a cabinet, and then we try to dig it up several years later. We didn't want that. We really wanted to have a transparent process where the entire Uba County community knew what we were doing, when we were doing it, and who were the lead entities. So through that effort, we have quarterly remote check-ins with all Uba County stakeholders for this process. We have frequent check-ins with various lead entities such as the federally qualified health centers, Uba County Office's education, and then the Behavioral Health Learning Collaborative, which I'll talk about in a minute later. Once a year, we also hold an annual in-person meeting to assess the current CHIP health priorities progress across the various goals, objectives, strategy, and tactics. And our first annual check-in meeting was just in September 16th at this government center. So as you can see, we had great attendance. You see our CIO, our sheriff, Supervisor Bradford, and Mike Lee there in attendance and providing great input among many, many other key stakeholders. So mental health access. So what have we been able to accomplish in just one short year of this five-year implementation plan? So you see that it's complete in the sense that we had to push back the timeline of target day completion by three months from January 1 to April 1, but we did successfully establish a Uba County Behavioral Health Learning Collaborative led by our Sutter-Uba Behavioral Health Director, Rick Bingham. And this is intended to provide increased overall wellness knowledge and awareness of how to access mental health services for Uba County residents. And as part of that, one of the key strategies is we need to hold every six-month community forum. So we actually held our first community forum to educate the Uba County community at Lenders High School in late October of this year. And the focus was really to provide education on how to access mental health options for those, not only on Medi-Cal, but also within the school settings, represented from Office Education, Uba County School Districts, all four of the five, Sutter-Uba Behavioral Health, Health and Human Services, AMPLA, Harmony Health, Petri, and Partnership Health Plan were there. Kaiser was invited but could not attend. So as you all know, I love data. So we just want to assess, did the community learn anything? But in just one short 90-minute session, they did. So as you can see, at least three people said that if, prior to the visit, they didn't know where to access mental health services locally, but after the session, they did. And then at least three more said that if they needed to access services for their child before, they didn't. And after the session, they did. And then finally, we really want to promote the de-stigmatization of mental health services. And that is should be conserved just like any other chronic condition like diabetes or high blood pressure. And as you can see, at least four individuals changed their mind and said that they were more likely to access mental health services for themselves or their family member after attending this one 90-minute session. Or mental health care, healthcare access, excuse me. So it's still in progress, and it's going to be a challenge, which I'll note in the next slide. And the reason is that we really want to collaborate with the three federally qualified health centers to put together like a monthly list of mobile medical sites. But they said staffing has been a significant challenge. So we're still working on that, and we're optimistic that we should have a schedule and collaboration with the three AQACs in early 2025 to list across the various sites within Uba County where residents can access mobile medical services. Safe neighborhoods and built environment. So this, I want to highlight that, as you can see, the lead entity isn't us in Health and Human Services or even the county. It's actually the Blue Zones project. And they were able to successfully implement walking MOIs in at least two additional Uba County locations. And this really encapsulates the fact that the Uba County Community Health Improvement Plan is not a public health plan. It's not even a county-specific plan for our local county government. It's actually whole of Uba County. All 80,000 of us should really participate in furthering the goals and progress in these three health priorities. So with that said, I wanted to also highlight that we will have an initial Parks and Recreation Work Group led by Mike Lee this Thursday. And the intention is to give us ways we can promote the utilization of parks, walking paths, playgrounds, and other recreational activities across Uba County. Because we have beautiful places, but people need to get out there and be able to exercise and really recreate. So I want to highlight this picture to tell you that I'm presenting, but the hard work is actually done by Uba County Health and Human Services staff. And this is the core CHIP team, as we call them. Thank you for your time, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Liu. It's a very impressive group that we have. We're very fortunate in Uba County to be able to keep all these programs going. The programs seem to just keep coming. So I don't know how you could stay ahead of that, but we're very impressed with what you've been able to do. So thank you. Anybody else from the board? Through the chair, yeah. No question, just a comment. Since I've been involved with this a little bit, I just want to say thank you, not only to you and your team, but to our community partners and community members who are participating in this. As you mentioned, the annual meeting, this room was full of people from the community who are working on this effort. So I think that's great to see. It's not just HHS. It's not just Uba County, as you pointed out. It's many different organizations and individuals across the community. So.
Thank you very much for the presentation. As always, your staff is really works hard to make Uba County a better place to live. So thank you.
Thank you again, Dr. Liu. Next up is Public Communications. Natalie?
Any person may speak about any subject of concern provided is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of 15 minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Please note, no board action can be taken on comments made under the heading. And through the chair, we have three request to speak cards.
Okay. And first?
Tony Farley.
Morning, Tony.
Good morning.
I'm going to miss you.
You too. Tony, for all you South Sur County, I have a part area. Thank you, Kevin, Kevin County Minister. Thank you for your service. Thank you, Jan Bender. Excuse me, George graduate. Thank you for your service. Also former Sacramento County worker. Thank you, Chairman Don Blazer. He is, he got a department degree in police Davis. Big department, a lot of money. John Misk, thank you, sir. John Misk is here. Thank you, Greg Bafor. He's Sacramento, DC. Set Flores on here by Solzhenitsyn's paper article is questionable. Thank you, A. Vaskis, the former Reserve W. Marine Corps and Vietnam Veteran. Thank you, Jim Nielsen's office, Jim Nielsen, James Gallagher, and Doug LaLafa, Italian, Italian-French guy. Doug is the bad to bone guy, the bad to bone. Thank you, Doug LaLafa, James Gallagher, and Jim Nielsen. Jim Nielsen. Thank you, Sheriff, another sheriff. Thank you, probation department. Thank you, future Forest Department member. Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Dr. Liu. And thank you, thank you for your service.
Thanks, Tony. It's always a pleasure.
The second card is for Pastor Bob Sizemore.
Morning, Pastor.
Morning. I'm Pastor Bob, Pastor West Sacramento Baptist Church, West Sacramento. I live up here in the Uba County area, out in Edgewater. And I've lived there since 2016. Since 2016, the traffic situation out there has gotten horrendous. Okay? You all know, we all, everybody in the county pays for law enforcement presence. I work, I'm retired, so I sit out in my garage. I've got a little thing that I do out there. And for years now, I have not seen one police car, sheriff's car, drive down my street. Okay? I rarely see them in the area. Okay? The reason I'm here is because people drive anywhere from 35 to 50 miles an hour down my street. The other day, I had a guy take his motorcycle and do wheelies down my street. Okay? I put this out, you know, as a warning to the people on our, on our street that, you know, that they need to knock it off. Because I've already contacted CHP. I've already contacted everybody I can in regards to this. I'm here today to ask you to do what you can do to get this resolved. Because the people I put it out to everywhere throughout the county, and outside of the county even, we are getting less law enforcement in the areas in which we need it. There is going to be an accident. It's going to be either a child that is hit. There's going to be somebody's pet that is, that is hit on these roads. And it's because we don't have the law enforcement presence in the area that we need it. Okay? CHP told me I have to call them when the incident happens. These people are coming home. They're going to be in their driveway and in their house before CHP can get there. Or they're going to work, and they're going to be gone. We need somebody to patrol the area at least, at least occasionally. Okay? So if you could please do something, we would definitely appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We always appreciate it when citizens come up to get our attention. And you're in the right venue right now because there's a lot of people in the room that are directly related to your concern. So thank you again.
The last card is for Sheriff Anderson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you, Supervisor Blazer, and present you with a couple tokens of appreciation for your commitment to Yuba County, and specifically to law enforcement. So thank you for your service. I'll bring it up to you so you don't have to come down.
Is this a badge and a gun?
Not a badge, nor a gun, nor is it a get out of jail free card.
There's a good chance I might need that. Thank you. That is the last. Do we have anybody on Zoom for public communication?
No hands on Zoom.
Okay, I think we're moving into county departments. All matters listed. Under county departments are action items which will be considered and voted on separately. And it looks like the first one is 670, hold on a minute, 676. That would be Sutter Yuba Morning, Rick.
Good morning, Honorable Chair and Chair and Board Members, excuse me. I'm Rick Bingham. I'm the Behavioral Health Director for Sutter Yuba Behavioral Health, and I am here to present our MHSA Annual Update. Before I do that, though, I just wanted to also thank you, Chairman Blazer. You've been a great support to behavioral health over the last few years, and we certainly appreciated your presence on the Behavioral Advisory Board. So thank you for that. So the annual update, as you can see here, was posted publicly on September 9th on our website for a 30-day public review and comment. We did receive feedback from the community, as well as the Advisory Board, and then the Advisory Board heard, had a public hearing on October 10th, and they voted to recommend that the Sutter County Board of Supervisors approve the annual update. So this is going to the Sutter County Board on January 7th, 2025. And of course, we're here to present in front of your board So this update is a little bit different because of the fact that Proposition 1 passed here in California back in March of 2024. The original Mental Health Services Act has been around for about 20 years. And so Prop 1 made some really sweeping changes on the Mental Health Services Act. So just a few things that it did. It changed the funding categories and the ways that we can spend our, our money. It did reduce local decision-making in how funds are spent. And so the categories are more prescriptive than they have been in the past, and so there's less kind of local control in that way. And then the second part of Proposition 1 created a $6.38 billion fund for behavioral health treatment and So some of the changes that happened, we will now be calling MHSA, BHSA. I promise you, that's the smallest change. Lots of the change are really, really big, and the changes will be happening kind of over a rolling period. We can begin making some of those changes as early as January 1 of 2025, but we have to have them all implemented by July 1 of 2026. And so with this update, we're in a bit of a holding pattern. We didn't really make too many changes due to the fact that we're waiting for state guidance on how funds can be spent in the new buckets that have been identified under, under Prop 1. And so we do anticipate a great deal of changes in coming years, but there were few in this update. The only changes were that we did reduce some of our contracts for prevention and early intervention with the schools, and then we also reorganized our prevention and early intervention team at Sutter Behavioral Health in anticipation of some of the changes that are coming down next few years. So this slide shows our current funding structure under MHSA. And so what we did is we took a five-year average of our funds, and that is because of the volatility of MHSA funding. Many of you may know that this is a tax on billionaires, so it's a 1% tax on incomes over a million dollars. And because of that, the revenue that we receive year to year can change drastically. And so in the last five years, it's been between 8 million to 17 million in, in a year, which obviously makes planning kind of difficult. So to kind of smooth that out, we were presenting here a five-year average. And as you can see, so the way that it's structured now is the state holds back 5% for admin costs. And what you see there at the top is NPLH. That stands for No Place Like Home. And so that funds some of the No Place Like Home projects that we have. So in Yuba County, that is the Cedar Lane Supportive Housing. We have staff there that provide supportive services to half of the residents. And then that gets us to a $12.2 million average for MHSA funds. Those funds are in three buckets, and it looks like part of this is covered up, unfortunately. But so those buckets are CSS, that's about 76% of the dollars, and then PEI, and then innovations. And then below those buckets are where they will be going in the new BHSA. And so we'll get into that a little bit more on the next slide. And we wanted to just kind of show again how the funding will be impacted through a BHSA. And so the first thing off the top that you'll notice is that the state, instead of withholding 5%, is withholding 10%. And part of that is because prevention is going to the state, but that is a significant cut in, in what we would be receiving. The other thing that I wanted to point out is the state is telling counties that there will be a significant change in the amount of data and reporting requirements that we have as a county. So much so that they're telling us that as a small county, you really should hold back 4% of your allocation to make sure that you have staffing to manage all of the new requirements. And so, you know, as others have said, when the state says things like that, we tend to believe them. And so we'll be holding back another 4%. And so you can see there, that's close to half a million. And so what that does to our allocation is it reduces it by about 1.1 million, or I should say, the, the funds that we have available for programs is reduced by about 1.1. So it goes from 12.2 to 11.1 million dollars. And then you see the three new funding buckets. And so FSP stands for Full Service Partnerships. That was previously under the CSS category. BHSS is kind of a catch-all, essentially. If it's not under FSP or housing, then it's going to go into BHSS, again, 35%. And then housing is the new bucket. So that's something that we haven't had dedicated funds for in the past. And so the state is telling us that we now need to have separate programs and, and services for the housing bucket. And so what this looks like for us, given our current spending, is before you hear. So under the FSP bucket, we look pretty good. So currently, we're already spending about 3.9 million on FSP programs, and you can see that's what we're allowed to spend under the FSP bucket. So I think I've, I've heard that we've overspent that by about $80,000. So not, nothing to, that we need to really worry about too much. And so, of course, what that does mean, though, is that we can't expand any FSP programs, right? We can't grow any of those programs, so we're limited to that 35%. And then under the BHSS bucket, that 35%, this was kind of the catch-all category previously as well, under CSS. And so you can see, we're currently spending seven point, almost 7.2 million dollars in BHSS. And under BHSA, they're telling us we can't spend more than 3.9 million, right? And so obviously, we will need to look at programs that will either be reduced or cut, Of the 7.2 million, we can move about a million of that to the, the new housing bucket. And you see there, we can spend up to 3.3 million on housing. And so we'll need to essentially develop new programs to make up the difference between the million and the 3.3, so about 2.3 million dollars in new programs. We're currently doing what's called a community program planning process to receive stakeholder feedback and input about which programs the community would like to see saved, if, if we can, and which ones are less important to the community. And so based on community and stakeholder feedback, we will be reducing certain programs within the BHSS bucket. And that is the end of my, my presentation. I'm happy to entertain any questions I have.
It takes a special person to deal with these frustrations. And I don't even know where to start. So do we have any other board comments?
Through the chair. Yeah, the state has developed a very frustrating shell game with the funds. And, you know, there's this grant amount, it's a mythical figure somewhere that you're going to get, and then they want you to plan accordingly. And I understand, and I'm surprised you have any hair left. It goes on everywhere in the state. The state is not 35 billion upside down. They're over 100 billion upside down, and they, you know, at least he's kept back on his hair gel, so.
Well, I could say that we do have great staff that, that work in behavioral health, and our fiscal staff are just extremely right people. And to follow all this, you can see, to follow the shell game, can be a really difficult and daunting project, but they do a great job.
Without the staff that we have, we couldn't maintain the standards that we have now. And thank you very much. Thank all your staff, because without them, the state doesn't care.
I will do. Thank you.
If there is no other board comment, any public comment? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, so we're going to need a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Our next item is 676, oh, excuse me, 674, probation.
Morning, Chair, Board Members. My name is James Morales. I'm with Yuba County Probation. I'm here to present on the interconnectivity project at the Tri-County Youth Development Center. The Youth Development Center was deemed substantially completed in October of '23, and we occupied in April of '24. On April 26 of '24, the Tri-County Oversight Committee approved the use of contingency funds to complete the interconnectivity project in which the new youth development center could electronically control the doors, intercoms, and cameras at the Secure Housing Unit, Kitchen, and Maxine Singer Youth Guidance Center. Administrative Services opened up a request for proposal, completed a three-quote method of procurement. Integrated Security Controls was a selected vendor, and the total cost for the project was $186,612. Those funds, again, will be coming from the contingency funds from the Tri-County Oversight Committee, and we are requesting that the board approve the budget adjustment request form to move the funds from the contingency fund to the appropriate budget line item paid for the project.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to take any questions.
Just a comment, you know, it's a, a great operation you're running out there with Camp Singer and everything else. So any other board comments? Andy?
Just had the tour of the new facility, and it's amazing. And it's the only one that's kind of, I understand, west of the Mississippi. So be proud of that and Camp Singer. We've got, we've got better juvenile hall programs than any other county in the state. So, thank you.
Okay, any public comment? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second. This requires a four-fifths vote and a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
That's cool.
Next up is 646, Sheriff Coroner.
Good morning, Chairman and Board Members. My name is Casey Diaz. I'm the Administrative Services Manager for the Sheriff's Department. Did my maybe call those microphones together? Is that better? Yes. Is that okay? Okay, thanks. This is my first time presenting. But I am happy to report that we received an award through the California Department of Justice Tobacco Grant Program in the amount of $263,613. So this grant funding supports a retailer enforcement plan to ensure strict compliance with tobacco laws and promote a healthier community. We will be collaborating with the District Attorney's Office, as well as our regional law enforcement partners, Wheaton Police Department and Marysville Police Department, with operations led by our problem-oriented policing unit at the Sheriff's Department. And we're excited for this opportunity to make a real impact in the community with a strong collaborative effort from both public health, public safety teams, through direction and support of Sheriff Anderson under Sheriff Morrisinski. We are requesting that the board adopt a resolution to authorize the Sheriff Coroner to accept grant award funds and execute all required documents for the grant. And thank you for your time. Happy to, happy to answer any questions.
Can you just give me a quick example, just to educate me on maybe a couple of programs that might be involved in this that are going to help?
Yeah, there's multiple layers to it, but obviously, we have some enforcement operations such as minor decoys and kind of shoulder tap techniques, where we obviously approach their retailers and make sure that they are, you know, adhering to the policies and laws for, for selling to underage minor, underage individuals, and as well as educating the retailers. So providing educational information for them to make sure they are in compliance. We have a prosecution element included, and that's where the DA's portion comes in, where, you know, for those that aren't following the laws, that we can actually take some, some real action against them.
So this is kind of beefing up, well, some of the stuff we're already doing, but this is going to help beef it up?
It is, definitely. It gives us the funding to, to go through these operations. And again, it's a collaborative effort with multiple agencies. So putting together, you know, coordinating that task force and reaching out to the 90 retailers that we have over three years is going to be quite an undertaking, but it's one we feel is very important to the community.
Yeah. Any other board comments? Anybody from Zoom? John?
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Any public comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move to adopt and take the money from the Department of Justice.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This will be a four-fifths required, and we'll need a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you up again? Yes.
Okay, we're gonna do number 695. Now that, now that you're experienced.
Right. Hold the, hold the microphone closer. Stay closer. You can do it.
Thank you.
Have faith.
Well, I do have more good news. So my goal is, you know, to condition board here that every time I present, we do have an award. So keep shooting with that. Two for two so far. But we are happy to, again, report that through our partnership with the California Department of Justice, we have been awarded grant funding for our ongoing modernization program with the Sheriff's Department as a sub- the Sheriff's Department as a subawardee to the National Criminal History Improvement Program. This award is $799,984, which reflects, again, a collaborative effort to better preserve our public safety records and enhance our ability to share that information at the regional and state levels. So there's two components to the grant-funded project. The first of which involved digitization of all of our case files and jail records. One of the first major legs of this modern, of our modernization efforts was our implementation of a new records management system, that's RIMS, which has been a monumental advancement for all of our operations. And without this foundational piece, we wouldn't be able to preserve the hundreds of thousands of records and adjust that information digitally. So the combination of these two items will allow the department to share all of that critical information with regional law enforcement agencies for an interconnected approach to public safety. The remainder of the grant funds will be used to implement those sharing capabilities. And again, we'd like to thank the support from Sheriff Anderson and Sheriff Morrisinski for the modernization program, which is an ongoing program and program, excuse me, and to join them in asking the board to approve the MOU that we have here with the California Department of Justice to accept the award.
Thank you. Sounds good. Any more comment? Any public comment? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll approve the memorandum of understanding with the California Department of DOJ so they can count all the crime.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. It's a four fifths vote and we'll need a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is 699, Board of Supervisors. This one's going to be a little trickier, so Kevin's going to handle it, right?
Not so much handle it, but just maybe I'll just give you a real brief background. So RCRC has requested that the board appoint a primary and an alternate to serve in 2025. The installation of officers will occur on January 8th, and so this is our last regularly scheduled board meeting before January 8th. And it is something that the board can always make a change in 2025 if it so chooses, but I'd recommend that the board at least present a primary and an alternate so that we have representatives on RCRC beginning January 8th.
Through the chair? I've had the privilege to serve as the RCRC rep for the last two years, and I've gotten more and more involved in that organization. We have a board meeting tomorrow, and one of the items on the agenda is to establish an ad hoc committee for the Carrier of Last Resort Challenge that we're having in this state. And I'm one of those supervisors that's proposed to be on that ad hoc. And I've also put my hat in the ring for a couple of leadership positions within the organization next year. So I'd be grateful and honored if the board would allow me to continue to serve as the rep. And I might suggest that Supervisor Messick be the alternate. He's the current alternate.
I think that's sort of a motion.
Is that a motion?
Sure, I'll move that. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second for the reps for the RCRC. All in favor?
Aye.
I guess we could ask for public comment. And seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, because of John, we're going to do a roll call.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the, the second organization, Golden State Finance's Authority. Kevin, did you need to say anything else on that?
No, I was going to say, and maybe, shoot, I gotta keep my light on there. I guess the motion, we should have been clear. It should have covered all, all three.
Do we need to do that again and re-vote on it? I know it's typical for counties to appoint the same rep and alternate to all three organizations. The three board meetings occur back to back on the same day. And so it's, it's most convenient to have the same individuals represent us, and that is what the majority of the 40 member counties do.
So moved. So can you tell me who the rep and alternate are for the other two?
Sure. So those are also today, those are myself as the primary and Supervisor Messick as the alternate for both of those, for all three of the organizations. And that would be my motion to do that moving into 2025.
Okay, good motion. Second?
Yeah.
You have a second. I have a second. We have a motion, a second. Any public comment? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. We have to do roll call.
Oh.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, as noted, we do assignments usually in January, so in case we have to tweak this, we still have that option. 694, Community Development and Services.
Good morning, everyone. Never presented on this one before. The item before you today, Board, is the approval of the Chair's signature on letters of opposition to increased truck weight proposals due to road impacts. At the request of Supervisor Bradford, staff was assigned this item to present to your board for consideration. The desire to bring this item before your board was due to the potential for bills similar to a bill known as the Shipit Act, House Resolution 471 being reintroduced in the new congressional session. This legislative proposal would have the effect of increasing allowable freight truck weights to 91,000 pounds without any new guaranteed funding for accelerated damage to roads and bridges, as well as no additional safety requirements. In an opposition letter by the California State Association of Counties, the following data were cited. According to a 2016 U.S. Department of Transportation analysis, increasing truck weight to 91,000 pounds would tack on an additional 1.1 billion in repair and replacement of federally funded bridges alone statewide. This analysis also stated that of the 25,810 bridges in California, only 53% are in fair or poor condition with nearly half faring worse. The Coalition Against Bigger Trucks and county engineers across the country have also found in a more recent analysis impacts to 233 bridges in the third congressional district of California alone totaling around 321 million in repair and replacement and 634 bridges with approximately 1 billion, 80 million in repair and replacement in the first congressional district of California as well. The same analysis statewide suggests that 3,089 bridges would be unable to accommodate the increased freight truck weight costing 6.9 billion in repair and replacement statewide. In the context of the current road infrastructure funding landscape at the federal and state levels, any attempts to increase the size and weight of commercial trucks would have the effect of placing an undue burden on county public works and its respective resources for bridge infrastructure maintenance. And in an attempt to preempt any new or reintroduced legislative proposals that would have the effect of increasing allowable freight truck weights to 91,000 pounds, this board item recommends sending letters of opposition to members Kylie and Lamalva in the House of Representatives, our county's representation in the House, as well as Senators Padilla and Butler in the U.S. Senate. Thank you all very much for your time, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Do you think part of the driving reason for this might be electric trucks? That's probably the main reason?
I think that's a fair assessment, sir.
So we, if we just reverse the mandate on electric trucks, we might be all right?
I think that would be among the confounding factors.
Okay, any other board comments?
Through the chair, I just want to thank Ian for his work on this and the board for their consideration. As mentioned, this is something that both CSAC and NACO have been talking about and certainly have, have concerns about. I, I think it's being put forward as well. It would only be on interstates, but you obviously, you know, you can't do pickup and delivery on the interstate itself. You have to utilize local roadways to get your, your beginning and endpoints. And so there's no way logistically to, to keep these trucks solely on interstates. That would be a pointless regulation. So anyway, there's definitely concerns about the impact to county maintained infrastructure and the associated costs that this would, would incur on the county without funding to deal with those costs, so. I would encourage my fellow board members to sign this letter.
Anything, Andy?
No.
Any public comment? Do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll move to approve.
And a second. And a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez. Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Ian.
Thank you, Ian.
640, County Administrator Approved Budget Adjustment.
Not quite as tall as Ian. Good morning, chaired members of the board. I'm May Bakin, Management Analyst with the County Administrator's Office. The item before you this morning is a budget increase in revenue in the amount of $28,631 from general government operating transfers in to professional services. In December of 2018, the Board of Supervisors approved a contract with Hinderleiter Delamas and Associates for sales tax and consulting services. These services conduct ongoing reviews to identify and correct unreported transactions, use tax payments, and distribution errors generating previously unrealized revenue for the county. The budget adjustment request and associated invoice shows a misallocation in the amount of $114,522 for the Department of Motor Vehicles within the unincorporated area of Yuba County in quarter two of fiscal year 2425. Overall, the misallocated funds found by HEHDL minus the invoice amount is a net gain to Measure K of $85,891. This audit work is a direct benefit to Measure K revenue, and the budget adjustment includes the invoice as a Measure K expense. Thank you for your time, and at this time, I'd ask the board to approve the budget adjustment increase in revenue.
Okay, just to be clear, they get a percentage of what they find, correct?
Through the chair, correct. Yes, they get 25% of the finding.
And by subbing that out to them, we don't really have the people or capacity to do it ourselves.
Correct.
Yes, okay. Any other questions? Any public comment? Okay, we can take a motion.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
And this one is a four fifths required and a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
What would you do without John?
690, oh, excuse me, 689 Administrative Services. Promender.
Good morning, Board. Promender Baines with Admin Services. I really do want to thank you, Chairman Blazer, for your, for serving the community and for your support and leadership. Really appreciate it, and you will definitely be missed. I'm here to recommend that the board approve the contract for security services. I presented in front of the board a while back about a contract we had in place with another vendor that wasn't able to fulfill their duties, and we had to terminate the contract. And we did an emergency contract and brought in a new vendor, so we didn't have any disruption to services. In the meantime, we went out to RFP for competitive bids. We received 13 proposals. Two of them didn't meet the requirements. They're non-responsive. So we had 11 ranked by three panelists, and the one that ranked the highest was Elite Universal Security, and that's who we're recommending that the board execute the contract with. It's a three-year contract for $2 million. If there's any questions, comments, I'll be...
I'm trying to recall, we used Elite once in the past, right?
Correct.
And then we went to?
We went out to RFP and we brought in Pride.
Pride, yeah. And then they failed, and so we're back to Elite.
Correct.
Okay.
Through the chair. I'd like to thank Monty and Elite for being able to respond so quickly. Trying to find a new security firm is a long endeavor, so.
Any other board comment or public comment? Seeing none, I will take a motion.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Promender.
Thank you.
680 Administrative Services. And looks like we have Promender.
Turn the other face, cheeks, you know? There you go. That is amazing. Community center, finally.
Good morning, Board. Promender Baines with Admin Services. I'm excited about this project. I'm sure you guys are all familiar with the apartment complex that was constructed off of Feather River Boulevard, Alicia, and Cedar Lane. When that was constructed, there was an acre carved out of future facility to provide services for the community. CDSA took the lead and did a needs assessment. They got the community involved. They conducted surveys, had meetings, and got their input, and also met with stakeholders, got their feedback. They put a plan together, and they've discussed items that are necessary or needed by the community and services that could be provided by the stakeholders. They've discussed this with the community, and they've also discussed potential design elements, what the facility would look like, what would they need in order to accommodate the services. They did this comprehensive study, and then we're trying to figure out who the main stakeholders should be to provide these services, to partner up with other stakeholders, and the ideal candidate is First Five. Many of their services are aligned with their mission that the community needs. First Five can serve as a vital advocate for securing funding and grants and partnerships that'll ensure the sustainability of the facility, because that is key, to make sure it's sustainable, that we can maintain the facility and provide the services. First Five has a great reputation amongst the community, they have the great networking capabilities, that they partner up with all stakeholders. Currently, they're out at the one stop. I get a call from them every once in a while saying, hey, can I get a conference room? This is a perfect facility that people will be calling them, and they're, they have the capability of providing more to them, and I know they're excited about it also. The next phase would be to bring in an architect, and that's what I'm here presenting today, is CHD Architects. They submitted a proposal, and we have worked with them before. They've submitted some examples of community centers that they've done throughout California, and they have some examples here, here in Orangeville. They put a gymnasium, game room, eating rooms, offices, storage. I love the architecture that they've done. They meet with the stakeholders, they ask questions, so they can figure out what the space would look like, and then they figure out the design, the architecture. Another facility that they're working on is in Sacramento. This is more of a social setting. They have indoor and outdoor. They have doors that they can open, so it's a large facility that they can incorporate the indoor in. Another one was Ranch of Cordova. They did a youth center. They have, in the... They have, in the middle of the facility, a rec room. Off to the side, team room. On the other side, reading and writing, so everything's separated, but everything's still together. They understand the needs of the stakeholders, and then they put the project together. I'm excited about it. I think this is a great opportunity for the community, and I think this is going to be a beautiful project once also. Are there any questions?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really good that we have that little parcel of land to work with, and and it is a little parcel. It's only one acre, so you have to be a little creative of what you can fit in there. And I think Erica Summers and her group are very impressive, one of the really good organizations that we have on early child development, so. Hopefully, are they going to require to get staffed up a little more, or?
That's a question for Erica. She is present.
Oh, she is. I was looking for her. Oh, there she is. Hello, Erica. Do you want to come up and comment on this? Try the mics.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I had a loud enough voice. I think the comment was, would it, would it acquire or allow us to staff up more to ensure the, you know, that the facility can run smoothly? And the answer would be potentially. But we work within finding local resources, state-funded resources, and other grants to be able to do that, and then to be able to facilitate those programs. So it would, if that were necessary, it would be at not, no cost to the county.
Yeah, but it's going to be needed probably. Extra staff.
Potentially.
Potentially.
We're growing. We're growing daily.
Yeah, you're, what do you have now, five?
Six.
Six? You are growing.
Goal is so that the facility can expand. That's the goal, so. Bringing in these architects, they have a special where we can expand in future.
Yeah.
Through the chair.
Any other board comment?
Through the chair. One of the things we need on this side of the river is a senior center. We've got nothing with seniors on this side. And the, the travel, thanks to Marysville, is, the other way is horrendous. But I, I would recommend that we consider part of the senior center on this side so that we can provide services. We have more than enough seniors. We've got an increase in our budget for Meals on Wheels, and they've got no place to go. And the kids would be a good place for them to be. You know, they can adopt a grandparent.
Gary? No, no comments, other than I think it's a great project, and I think First Five's a perfect partner, so.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm moving to approve.
Any, any public comment? I don't see any of this thing. So we do have a motion and a second.
Yeah, the second.
Roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, looking forward to it. Thanks, Erica. Thanks, Promender.
Thank you.
You have too much fun with this project.
Seven eleven, which is the Clerk Recorder Register of Voters, and welcome.
Anna Heligas, Clerk Recorder Register of Voters, and I am here today to present to you the November 5th general election for you to accept the certification. I do have some information regarding the election to go over with you. The election, at a glance, you can see we had 44,000 registered voters. We had thirty-five precincts, twenty poll sites. We have three drop boxes. For this election, we had 169 poll workers, which is a larger number than normal. We also had fifty-six canvas workers. This, I'm sure, will be a little shocking. This is the estimated cost of the election. It does not include any overhead figures. And you can see by this breakdown that by far the greatest cost is associated with printing, the printing and mailing of ballots and voter guides. Other than that, there was no real shock. The elections have just become increasingly more and more expensive. This is just a glance at turnout for this election. So out of our 44,000 registered voters, we had 30,443 voters cast a ballot that was counted. You can see we had 5,000 voters on Election Day. That includes voters who voted at the polling site and voters who cast a provisional ballot. The remainder of the ballots cast were by mail, and we still call them vote by mail, but they come in by a variety of reasons. You'll see that our turnout was 69.06%. And just to take a look at that, the 69.06% is a drop from the November 2020 turnout. But what's interesting is that the turnout percentage is a drop, but at the same time, we processed and counted 242 more ballots in 2024 than in 2020. This is an interesting, this is a capture from our electronic poll pads of Election Day. It's a real-time graphic of turnout. And you can see, as expected, the busy time at the poll sites was around the end of the workday. We had a large turnout and a drop-off, but it remained pretty consistent throughout the day. This is a, our vote by mail ballot turnout. And you can see the dotted line, the dotted yellow line, what that represents is what we call absentee Saturday. And that is the point where we cut off all the ballots that have been received up to that point in time. They are then processed, and those are the numbers that are reported at eight o'clock on Election Night. So you can see we had a fairly steady turnout, but then you can see what happened to that turnout after that point in time, which includes the weekend before the election and Election Day. This is a little breakdown of the methods by which we receive those ballots that we still call vote by mail. And you can see that the largest percentage does come in by mail, followed second by the government center parking lot drop box. We have excellent turnout at that drop box, and then just behind that is turnout at the poll sites, the drop-offs at the poll sites on Election Day. And then you can see, followed behind that at our counter, we have an interior drop box and then the Linda Fire Department drop box. And you see fax on there, and fax is a method that is only available to overseas voters. And that's why that comprises such a tiny percentage. And then the question that everybody is asking, they've asked us several times, and we understand their inquiry. Why does it take so long? To break that down, there's, there's several reasons for that. But I assure you, one of them is, is not that we are not working. There are ballot processes and procedures that impact that timeline. There's ballot deadlines that impact that timeline. There's rules about results reporting. There's logistical issues. There's staffing issues. And then there's the unexpected, which seemed to happen to us this election. For the process and procedure, there are certain things that we are required to do during canvas. We're required to conduct an audit of the Election Day precincts. That's an activity that takes about one to two days, and it's a complex process. And it doesn't add anything to our turnout results. So all of that work that's being accomplished isn't manifested in increasing numbers. The same is true of the 1% manual tally, which is our hand count of 1% of the precincts. We must perform that function, and yet it doesn't add anything to the results. Vote by mail preparation is one of the most significant time consumers. And you can see by the graph that all the ballots came in late. Prior to absentee Saturday, we had daily, we had the ability to process those ballots and prepare them daily. And we, it would take about the day for us to do that. And so then we are being asked to process the equivalent of what we processed in the previous 30 days in a matter of days. And there's security measures that just have to be taken. We have to check those signatures. We have to do those activities that are necessary to ensure that those ballots should be counted. And this election, there's also processing provisional ballots. We had 1,300 provisional ballots. Those ballots take much longer to process. They have to be entered. They have to be investigated. We have to determine that those voters are eligible to register, that they have not voted in another county. And so they're very labor-intensive. Under ballot deadlines, and this is something that is unique state to state. States are given the latitude to, to form their, many of their election rules. And so in California, ballots received can be dropped off at any county in the state. And so those ballots received in other counties, if they were timely at that county, they're timely to us, regardless of when that county delivers that ballot to us. We received two ballots the night before we certified from another county, and those two ballots were processed and counted. Ballots received by mail, if they're postmarked on Election Day, and we receive them up to seven days after the election, those are timely ballots, and they must go through the entire process. We have to sig-check them. We have to, if there's issues with their signature, we have to give that voter an opportunity to correct that issue. For this election, they passed legislation on September 22nd, 2024 to allow voters up to December 1st to cure their signature issue. So that also put a hard deadline for us. It was much lengthier than previously. Whenever we have results reporting, every time we post an update to results, it's not as simple as pressing print, getting a new set of results, and posting them to the website. The state requires, at that same time, we must update and report the number of unprocessed ballots. And as we are moving ballots through the process, we have several categories we have to track, and that requires us then to move ballots from counted, well, some may have been counted, some may not have been counted. They may have had to been duplicated. And so that's a very time-consuming process to make sure that before we post any results to our website, we are prepared with that update from the state. Logistics, anybody who has seen the impact of elections has on the county facilities, we, we kind of move in and take over, and we perform a lot of functions now in the board chambers. But we don't have a dedicated election space for tally and canvas activities, and the board chambers for space is fantastic. But what it's not is secured, and that requires us to move things in and move things out from a secure location. So that's just one, one additional factor that impacts the amount of work that we can accomplish. And the same is true of limited space and technology. Even if we had the funding for additional staff, we don't really have spaces to put them. We have filled up all our spaces. And I'm not sure that we have additional computer jacks for computers, which, you know, could be accomplished. But all those things do impact our ability to move forward. The same with staffing. For this election, 50% of our staff, this was their first election. So they were in training mode for this election, and they did fantastic, and, and they showed up again the next day, which was always very reassuring for us. But without, with limited experienced staff, that impacts our ability to support certain canvas activities because the canvas board members are typically members of the public who are untrained, and so they need experienced guidance to get through those steps. So where if we could get 40 members of the public, we don't necessarily have the experienced staff to guide them through the steps that must be taken. And in 2024, we had the pleasure of a power outage the day after the election. I'd like to thank Admin Services, who was quick on the spot assessing the situation and was preparing to relocate us if that was necessary. It turned out PG&E got us turned back on later that day. We also had some safety issues during the election that impacted our ability, one of our scheduled days to report result updates. We were unable to do so due to these circumstances. So elections are quite, have become quite a complex function. And so we just wanted to give you just a little taste of, over the last 20 years, how things have changed. And each one of these changes has impacted the entire election process. In 2004, voter registration deadlines were 15 days before the election. If you didn't register by that time period, you had the option of obtaining a court order and talking to a judge and having a judge validate that you should have been registered. Today, the registration cutoff is 15 days before the election, but that only applies to your ability to vote at the polling site a live ballot. Any eligible voter may register up to through Election Day and vote a conditional provisional ballot. In 2004, vote by mail ballots had to be submitted by 8:00 PM on Election Day. Postmarks didn't count. If your ballot was not received by eight, it wasn't timely, and it wasn't counted. In 2024, ballots are due by 8:00 PM on Election Day if submitted in person. If they're received by mail, they're expected to be turned, they're considered timely if they are received within seven days of Election Day and they have a postmark on Election Day. And then the submission locations, in 2004, voters were required to submit their ballot in Yuba County for us to accept it. Today, voters can submit their ballot at any county in the, in the state of California. Any drop box, any elections office, any poll site in California. We also have, which is a little lost in the bottom there, the vote by mail issuance, prior, in 2004, any voter could request a ballot in the mail. That was the voter's option. There was no criteria to qualify for that. Today, every voter is required to be mailed a ballot. So looking forward to 2006, from having just accomplished a hugely successful November 2024, we're looking to, we're working with Admin Services to secure GIS services, which is a critical function for elections and our ability to precinct voters so that they're voting on the right contest. We've been discussing space and logistical issues. We continue to train our newest staff and cross-train existing staff from the Clerk Recorder's Office who play a bigger and bigger role in the election process. We look to evaluate We look to evaluating cost saving measures because the cost has just skyrocketed for all of these functions. Um, we will look at the feasibility of moving to a vote center voting model. And we'll prepare for new legislation. We have received word that the legislature is, got new bills waiting for us. And if most of them are very generic, we intend to. And so with the government's help, we will continue to conduct elections. That is, I don't think I have an end.
Thanks, Donna. Did you have some more?
No.
No, okay. Well, for the average citizen, this is a good, uh, the average citizen, I don't think realizes the complexity of running an election, including me. I, you know, they, they figured the votes come in, you count them, you're done. But it's, it's quite a process and I appreciate your presentation. Uh, as far as the cost, I guess it's always an advantage to include any special elections with the general elections. Rather than if you ever had to run a special election, it would be costly.
They're, they're very costly.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm glad for the efficiency of your department. Any other board comments?
Sure, uh, through the chair. Thank you for the presentation, Donna. I really liked, uh, some of the graphs, uh, that you had there. Um, and the data that you presented as well as trying to give an explanation of, of why it takes so long and all the challenges. Um, I know I, I try really hard to encourage voters to get their ballot to the county, uh, prior to the Friday before the election to, to try to minimize that. It looks like we still have lots of work to do, uh, in, in communicating that out. I know you worked as well to try to let voters know about that. Cause I certainly do hear concerns about the time, just like you do. Uh, and, and I tell people, hey, you, you, you can help solve this problem if you just get your ballot to the county earlier. So you can play a role in making the vote count go quicker. And so I would just encourage folks to do that or, uh, you know, do what I did this year and go in and vote at the polling site on Election Day. Uh, that will also work. So I just thank you to you, your staff, your dedicated volunteers. I know it takes a lot and it takes, uh, you know, all those different folks working together to make the election happen. So thank you.
Through the chair. You definitely take over on Election Day, but the results apparently, um, according to your, your statistics, uh, 69% of the registered voters participated, which to me is a very high percentage. And I don't know how we stand in the, the state as far as the, but 69% is a pretty good participation. And I think that was, that was indicated nationwide by the shift of, uh, the red and the blue. But, uh, thank you very much. Tell your staff thank you for patience with us. Uh, we look forward to the next election, don't you?
I will convey that to them. And I'd just like to say, we, we very much understand that the public doesn't understand. And, um, we sometimes find it shocking ourselves, the amount of time it takes to move forward on these after-Election-Day tally activities. And so we, we do look to do outreach and education. But sometimes, in all honesty, it's just something you have to see to, to understand the volume. But we, we completely understand and we push really hard to, you know, to move those things along quicker.
I forgot to ask, are you still on a 15-hour shift for the poll workers?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we are. We, um, our, our poll workers this election, prior to the election, we had an unprecedented number of poll worker applications. We thought we were going to have to turn people away. And, um, after the first couple of trainings, uh, we had about, I think, 50 people drop off. And a large part of that is the duration of the day.
Yeah, I would, I would not make it.
We understand completely.
Okay. Any other board comment, any public comment? So we can entertain a motion to accept the certification.
No mood.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Um, had a lot of department, um, presentations. We are down to the last one, 604, uh, Human Resources. Hello, Tiffany.
I have to put it way down here because I'm short. Hopefully you can hear me okay. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Tiffany Manuel, Human Resources Director. And I need my glasses. Today I bring before your board a recommendation to adopt an amendment to the 2024 Yuba County Conflict of Interest Code. California Government Code requires all counties to keep a conflict of interest code that must be renewed every two years. And your board last approved the amendment in 2022. This year, Human Resources worked with County Council and the Clerk Recorder's Office, as well as consulted with each department head and determined the applicable amendments, which include updates to the language in the code, the filing categories, and positions that participate in making decisions which may foreseeably have a material effect on economic interests and therefore require reporting. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
We haven't really made any changes in it though, right?
We did make changes.
Oh, we did. Did you say that?
Yes.
I missed it.
Each year we make changes. Um, there's requirements as we add new positions, as we remove positions, as we change position names. Um, we also condensed the filing categories this year, um, as recommended by the FPPC. Um, we, um, yeah, so there was a lot of work that went into it this year, a lot of cleanup that I think, uh, Donna, uh, appreciates greatly as we've been wanting to do this for quite some time.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's a tough job. Any, uh, board comment on this? Public comment? So we have a motion.
Moved to adopt the resolution.
All second.
Motion and a second, a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tiffany. So we are, uh, actually moving along not too badly. We have a couple other items up before we go to closed session. So the next up is ordinances and public hearings. And Natalie, can you read that off for us?
If you challenge in court the action or decision of the Yuba County Board of Supervisors regarding a zoning, planning, land use, or environmental protection matter made at any hearing described in this notice, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at such hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors at or prior to said hearing. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per individual or group.
So we have item, uh, 657, Community Development and Services.
Good morning to the board. Sam Button, Public Works. Uh, this public hearing and resolution is for, or to establish an undergrounding, uh, utility district on Linters Avenue from Earl Road to, uh, just south of North Beal Road. Uh, Linters Avenue has been deemed a corridor of focus in the strategic plan. And under, uh, and undergrounding the overhead utilities would further increase the aesthetics of the road. An undergrounding project would also support the recent Business Facade Grant Program and a future Complete Streets project that will be beginning design, uh, soon for this section of road as well. Uh, today's process ultimately allows Public Works to pursue undergrounding the facilities and to use Rule 28 credits. PG&E no longer allocates Rule 28 work credits for, or to fund undergrounding projects, but the county does have approximately 2.7 million in credits to use. Uh, if we do not use these credits by 2033, uh, they will be deemed expired. Any questions from the board?
If that's your presentation, then we're going to open the public hearing and we'll ask for any board comments or public comments. Any board comments?
Through the chair. The only comment I got is that, uh, people are concerned that some, some of this project will put a divider down Linters, but this is only, this is, that's years down the pike. It's, that's my understanding.
Yes. So we did receive a grant, uh, through SECOG. They applied for the reconnecting communities. So that section will be designing a complete streets project. So, um, although that is separate, they would be looking at medians or two-way left turn lanes, those types of things. But that would be in that design, uh, trying to get ahead of the overhead utilities that are out there to, um, I mean, not only is it more aesthetically pleasing, but, um, gives us more flexibility with sidewalks and utility relocations and those types of things. Um, so this would help us get ahead, uh, for that project. But yeah, I, um, I, I do totally hear you for the concerns. We will be doing public engagement and outreach for that project. So, um, hopefully we'd be able to address those concerns.
That will put a number of businesses out of business real quick. All right.
Thank you.
And any public comment on this item? Uh, seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Moved to adopt the resolution.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and this will require a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we had a little bit of, um, correspondence. Natalie, can you just briefly say what we received? We had about three items, I think, three or four.
Yes, we received three items of correspondence. One was the statement and independent auditor's report for first five fiscal year, uh, June 30th, 2024. We received a notice from BTS Law Firm regarding the Yuba County Water Agency Application and Permit. And we received an update from the Childcare Planning Council of Yuba and Sutter Counties regarding the accomplishments and highlights for fiscal year 2324.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, we'll see if we have any board or staff member reports. Uh, Andy, do you have anything?
Yeah, December 7th, there was the VFW Pearl Harbor Memorial Ceremony. And, uh, Area Four on Aging. During that week, we had a approval of the, of the requested budget and we, we almost, uh, increased our Meals on Wheels, uh, allocation to what we actually used, this year, which is almost a hundred and, uh, $110,000 more than allocated. So we get paid through this budget and we don't have to spend money. Uh, there was a mention during a public comment, uh, about, uh, traffic problems. What they're requesting would require a cop in every corner. And you can't legislate morals or ethics, but we have a number of people because of the current, uh, criminal situation, the legality of being responsible for your actions. And hopefully this coming December, uh, January 1st will have a change in that attitude and that we don't tie their hands behind their back when they arrest somebody and you actually do time. It's very frustrating to, uh, going from 2009, a Walmart where you can go pick up what you want. Now you have to wait for an attendee to unlock everything. This is really getting, uh, out of hand. Let's see, what else do we do? Uh, yesterday we did the, uh, um, tree lighting, for the fentanyl, uh, deaths that we're having in, in Yuba County. And this is the second ti- second, uh, lighting of that tree. And it was, uh, very, very interesting situation, talking to people that had problems with fentanyl. Sunday I attended the Bang Pal Remembrance, uh, Ceremony in Sacramento.
Gary?
So a couple items. Uh, first I want to, uh, echo Supervisor Vasquez and Pastor Bob's concerns about traffic enforcement in the unincorporated, uh, portions of the county. I know I hear from constituents all the time about people speeding, running stop signs. Uh, people really, um, uh, don't seem to care about the safety of their neighbors. Many people don't. And we have a, a lack of, uh, presence from the CHP in large quantities, uh, in, in the community to do that enforcement. And so I don't know from a county standpoint, if there's anything we can do to try to advocate to our local CHP office and really probably to the state as a whole, as I'm sure it's a resource challenge for CHP. And that's why there aren't more officers out and about. But, uh, I would certainly favor any kind of advocacy we can do. Um, and I'm certainly willing to work with like RCRC and others, um, to, to try to, to, to work with our state partners and help them understand that, that we need, we need more traffic enforcement in, in our communities. Um, and then a lot of community events going on this time of year. And so just to mention, uh, a couple that I was able to participate in this last weekend. On Friday, there were tree lightings in, uh, at Beal and, uh, in Wheatland. And then there was the Plumas Lake Christmas Parade on, uh, those were on Friday. Saturday was the Wheatland Christmas Street Fair and there was a great turnout for that. Uh, and then coming up on Thursday, uh, Santa will be on the fire truck riding around Wheatland. Uh, Friday is the Plumas Lake Night of Lights. Um, and also breakfast with Santa on Saturday morning in Plumas Lake. And then Santa on the fire truck in Plumas Lake next week on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. So, uh, lots of great stuff going on, uh, down in the fourth district for, with respect to Christmas. So thanks, Gary. Uh, John, got anything going on?
Yeah, I have a few things. First off, thank you guys for being patient with me on having to zoom in. It definitely beats the alternative of you catching whatever I have. I wanted to let you know that I attended the Marysville Christmas Parade Saturday night where I, uh, was with the Browns Valley 4H Group and we won the best decorated float, best lights on the float award. So got a trophy for that. And we are having our first annual, uh, Loma Rica Christmas Parade. We moved it to Sunday because of the rain that it sounds like we're going to have on Saturday. So Sunday, December 15th, starting at 4:00 PM at the Gold Eagle Market, it's going to go up Loma Rica Road to Fruitland Road, Fruitland Road to the Lions Club in Loma Rica, where we will have a spaghetti dinner with Santa. Um, we have several raffle prizes, including, I think, four firearms, a Blackstone griddle and, um, a bunch of other stuff. So lots of baskets from each subgroup in our, in the Browns Valley 4H. So you guys can make it up to Loma Rica next, uh, Sunday and it'd be greatly appreciated. And other than that, I'm also going to need another refresh force on, from Gary because, not that you'd want to see how miserable I am right now, but I couldn't figure out how to turn my camera on. That's it.
Thanks, thanks, John. Uh, County Council.
I just want to say that it's been a pleasure being your county council and on behalf of myself and to me tomorrow, my chief deputy who's here in the audience and the entire county council office, thank you for your leadership and your service and your friendship. And I will really miss you.
Kevin. Sure. Um, a- actually maybe before I get on to that, uh, the traffic enforcement, there's also traffic education, or I guess awareness of your neighbors. Cause my guess is most of the speeding happening in the neighborhoods are people that live in those neighborhoods.
Oh, yes.
Right? And, and so that's, that's a whole, like respecting one another issue that, uh, needs to get out there. And, and, and so it's, it's definitely more than Supervisor Vasquez mentioned. You can't, you'd have to have a, a cop in every corner kind of thing to really enforce it. So there's, there's a bigger component to that. And, and so that's maybe something where the county can look for maybe, um, traffic safety grant opportunities, something that can help us with that education and outreach part.
Common courtesy hasn't been common for years.
Right, but, um, that's definitely been my pleasure, um, working, working with you chair this year and, uh, wish you all the, all the best in your future. But wait, there's more. You get to chair one more meeting. We're, we're going to have a special meeting, right? That you get to chair.
And I really appreciate that.
Yes, yes. So, so we will have a special meeting on December 19th at 1:00 PM. And that, that agenda will be posted here shortly.
Yes. Natalie, anything from the clerk of the board office that you know of?
Yes, through the chair. Uh, John, this is Mary, clerk of the board. We just want to go ahead on behalf of the clerk of the board office. We just want to personally thank you and let you know that it has been truly a pleasure and a privilege working closely, closely with you this year as you being chair. And we just want you to know that the whole staff, the whole clerk of the board office will definitely miss you. But we do expect you to come back for coffee and cookies.
Yeah, just send me a text on those cookies and I'll be there. Um, okay, I had a couple of things. Uh, the library construction is underway. Uh, the library construction is underway. From what I understand, we've taken out the carpets and we've taken down the ceiling and we've demoed the, uh, restrooms, so they're moving right along. I think optimistically it would reopen next fall. Does that sound right? Yeah. So it's, it's under construction and the library is now located next to Kevin's office. And, uh, it looks like they have that under control. Uh, Marysville is blessed with good weather. We had a nice tree lighting, um, in Candy Cane Lane on Friday night. The parade went well. There was about eighty-five plus entrance, no rain. Uh, it was a really nice turnout. On the hotel front, a couple of things. I think I understand that starting tomorrow is major destruction of the Hotel Marysville. That may start tomorrow. Hopefully we'll get the road back open as soon as we can. On the new hotel situation, we had a nice groundbreaking for the, um, Hyatt, uh, Extended Stay Suites, I think they call it. That's going to be over near the ballpark. And along with that is a grocery outlet and Starbucks. So the groundbreaking ceremony was last week and so we'll start seeing activity over there. All good stuff. I don't think I have anything else. We're going to take a social break before we start closed session. It's about 10 minutes to 11:00 and we'll start the closed session around 11-ish. So we'll be back.
Yuba Sutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumislakeselfstorage.com. You've seen signs marking some of the gems in Marysville. They're produced by Sapphire Sign Company, providing something small, large, and mobile. With decades of experience, Sapphire Signs has pioneered local production of a variety of signs, like temporary campaign-style signs, welcomes for unique events, building signage, event promotion, and vehicle customization. Need a sign? Make it a gem from Sapphire Sign Company, on the web at sapphiremarketinggroup.net. Sapphire.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.